Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:36 and we are going to go ahead and get the meeting going. Reminder for everybody to please have their masks on over their nose and mouth. Guidelines from Governor Inslee's office in response to the COVID-19 outbreak in the Open Public Meetings Act allows in-person meetings to occur but are limited to 25% capacity in the meeting room. Those who cannot attend in person this evening are joining us via Zoom webinar. We're happy to have all of you, no matter where you are. Now I would like to have us recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you like to join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power of liberty, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now go for a roll call to confirm attendees. Director Ginny Gronwald.
Here.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Director Julie Bocanegra.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers. I need to ask for a motion to excuse Rachel's absence tonight.
I move to excuse Rachel Rogers from tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
And Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll.
Here.
Okay, great. And next we have the land acknowledgement and I would like to ask Director Gronwald to read that for us.
With pleasure. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kellogg's Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since the time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you, Ginny. Okay, next up, we would like to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion for adoption of tonight's agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have special recognition and the subject is Principals Month. And we all know how important principals are to running our schools and seeing that our students get the education that they deserve. So I would like to talk about -- oh, Director Perkins is going to be reading the proclamation for this tonight. And then is Tony Miles here in the audience?
Yep.
Oh, there he is. We'll have him come up afterwards to accept it for us. Go ahead, Rob.
State of Washington proclamation. Whereas, the Washington Senate has declared the month of October 2021 as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the United States Congress to designate National Principals Month and resolutions thereof. And whereas, principals and assistant principals play significant roles in our education system by creating hope for each and every student in their buildings, by leading culture, systems, and learning, and by working tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas, principals and assistant principals work collaboratively with families, teachers, and district officials to develop mission statements, set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence, and maintain high curriculum standards and expectations for all students. And whereas, the Association of Washington School Principals honors such exemplary principals and assistant principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession. And whereas, to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals to the success of each and every student in Washington schools, our most valuable resource, and to encourage residents of Washington to observe Principals Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of the importance of school leadership in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Principals Month in Washington. And I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed this 27th day of September 2021, Governor Jay Inslee.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Tony, can we have you come up and accept the proclamation for the principals? Do you want to say something?
Yeah, Tony Miles is representing the Evergreen Administrators Association, Associate Principal at Union High School, and one of the many principals and associate principals that do -- I mean, all the things that you mentioned, Rob, but this year they're hiring managers, and they are every year, but this year in particular, they've spent a lot of time on that. They're welcoming people back to the schools that have been out for so long, the job that our administration, our administrators, building administrators do every day to just kind of keep things rolling as smoothly as possible. It's -- I appreciate the opportunity to get out and talk with the principals and associate principals, particularly now as we've gone through the first couple of months or month and a half or so. Feels like we're starting to get into a little bit more of a role at this point and starting to get back to where folks are kind of comfortable being back at school again. But, you know, our teachers, our counselors, our classifieds, everybody does an amazing job and we never stop, I think enough to thank the administration, the building administrators for what they do. So on behalf of myself and the district, Tony, thank you for everything you and all of you do.
Especially during this past couple of months, our principals have been asked to do a lot of extra stuff. And I've had to pivot on, you know, a phone call and they've done it, especially when it was concerning our kids, getting them back. And we couldn't have, you know, we can't appreciate you guys more, especially during COVID and everything else. So thank you for all the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you. On behalf of the principals group, thank you for your recognition. The government did leave out all duties as otherwise assigned. It did last year and have been challenging, but thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the board's consent agenda. I'd like a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's consent agenda?
I move approval of the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the superintendent report. So I'll turn this over to Superintendent Merlino to give us his updates.
Thank you. Victoria, I think that Tony's comment about other duties as assigned is an appropriate comment. I've had the opportunity the last weeks to get out and visit with some of the elementary principals. And I've gone out and been able to get into one of the buildings where the principal was filling in as a COVID room individual, kind of covering because they hadn't -- they didn't have a sub or they couldn't find someone to be in there. I know that we've got administrators filling in as teachers, as subs, when there's no other alternative. So I think this year, more than any year that I've been around, is definitely in other duties as assigned. So really honestly can't say I agree with Ginny and everybody on the board that can't thank enough what our administrators are doing on a daily basis. And that's not -- I mean, everybody is. Everyone that works in our system is working so hard for our students in very difficult, challenging times. And so very appreciative of everyone. I want to really quickly start off by just again thanking Clarissa Hightower and Julie Tummerty, Jamila Singleton, Tilly Meyer for the presentation on the work, the equity work that's ongoing in our district. Rather than answer the question of what we don't do, we spent some time two weeks ago talking about what we -- actually, how we do work with our students in the system. That was a great presentation, gotten a lot of really good responses. It's on our website. If anyone hasn't had the opportunity to see that, it's on the website for those of you to review. It was a great, great thing. I also want to mention that we have future teaching and learning focusing on kids, some of the future things that will come up. I know Rob asked, I think Rob, maybe it wasn't Rob, but asked about a presentation on Canvas and how that's being used. That's upcoming. We've got a movement towards neighborhood schools within special education. We'll have a presentation on that. There's a new law around identifying students that potentially have dyslexia, so there'll be conversations around. So a lot, lot more of the student-focused presentations coming from the group and that's tremendous. Really quickly want to mention that on Saturday, Rob, myself, and Ginny were able to participate. There was a Western Region National School Boards get-together in Vancouver where board members that are leaders in the states of Arizona, Nevada, California, Oregon, Idaho, and Alaska and Washington were in town. And the Executive Director of WAZA, Tim Garchow, asked if we could provide a tour of Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School and Cascadia Technical Academy, which at 8:30 in the morning, we did at Hila High School. And I just, you know, every time we have the opportunity to go and participate where the students are leading the conversation on a Saturday morning, you had five rotations of kids in classrooms explaining the different areas of work that happened at Hila. Amy Haynes, Sean, Rashonda Waters there, you know, you even had the Phoenix mascot all dressed up on Saturday. And it kind of like the -- they came in on a -- what I thought was, they said there was going to be a chartered bus, which was just the, I think, chartered from the battleground for students. They were all driving in on a school, on a school bus and kind of sleepy when they got in, it kind of felt like. But then as soon as they started getting in the rotation, the questions that they were asking, they were so impressed. And then not only the, I mean, our teachers were in the classrooms answering questions and it was tremendous. And then we went over to Cascadia. I didn't stay for the whole trip, but I know that that, I'm sure, was just as, and Rob, Ginny can talk about what they saw at Cascadia. But just very, it was great for our school district. It was great for these leaders around the West Coast to have opportunity to see our programs. Tim mentioned to me that now all of these board members are going to go back to their school districts and say, you know, we need to do programs like what they have in Evergreen, which was, it was great for the district, it was great for the kids, great for our teaching staff and our administrators that were there on Saturday also. We, you know, like we've done for months, a year, a year and a half, we meet weekly. We do see case rates, COVID case rates kind of flattening a little bit and declining somewhat, maybe not in Clark County as much as they are across the rest of the state, but they are declining. This week, we distributed a new flow chart that changes what, you know, what the requirements are for students to stay home. They now have A and B symptoms again like we had last year. So the hope is that that will reduce somewhat some of the disruptions to our students' educations. The A symptoms being fever, loss of taste, muscle aches and pains, things that are a little more identifiable as COVID-related potential symptoms. But we're working with our staff. I think a letter went out this week on that. We've implemented testing in some of the pilot schools. Most of our schools now have testing available, rapid testing for students. That's been great work led by Heather and Bobby and Scott, working with our principals very positive. We have, October 18th is next Monday, that's a date that we've all kind of been aware of for quite some time since Governor Inslee mandated the vaccination for all staff or exemption with accommodation. The exemptions were due to us by October 1st. The vaccinations were due by the time you got to, I think it was October 4th or 5th, you needed to have the, to have the two weeks before, and I guess it was the 4th. We, I think as a county, have had some great fear about the numbers of staff that might be impacted by this. And I think when you talk about a month, six weeks ago, there was some idea it could be as many as 10% of our staff, which for us is over 300 staff members. I think we are very pleased to say, I think that our, our numbers are much, I think we have, I mean, there's still work going on, it's not done, there's still meetings and individual conversations going on, but I think we have well over 98, 99% of our staff complying, which is tremendous. And most of those vaccinated, not a huge number of exemptions. So I was on a statewide call, Superintendent Reichdahl with superintendents across the state. I do think there's areas of the state much more hardly hit than we will be, certainly in Evergreen. But I think the hope is that there could be, when the data is collected, we're going to get a data collection tool, not next week, I think maybe sometime next week, so that we, all districts in the state can report to OSPI how many exemptions for medical, religious, what types of accommodations, how, what's the vaccination rate. And that may very well be used in changing the need for the quarantining. He talked a little bit about that today, that that could potentially change the contact tracing if there are high enough levels of vaccinations within our schools. So we're still working on it. HR, JNA, and all of the staff has been working extremely hard to meet the timelines and work with individuals. And so very thankful for all of that also. But I think very encouraged by where we are as a district with that. Enrollment, we talked, have talked about a few times with respect to the enrollment decline. We did see a larger jump in October than what we've seen in previous Octobers. We probably increased about 550 FTE. Normally it might be between 100, 150, but you remember, we had a number of students that were excluded in September because of the immunizations weren't up to, up to date. I think we have less than maybe 50 at this point, so it's not very many left. What remains to be seen now is how does, do we see enrollment kind of continue to tick up throughout the year, or is this follow the similar patterns that we would see in every other year where it goes up for a while then it comes back down again? So at the meeting on the 28th, 6th, I guess two weeks from tonight, Jennifer Jacobson will be here kind of presenting some stuff on that and presenting some stuff on, information on our ESAR, kind of more specifically how we've spent our ESAR funds. And then the last thing I'll mention, I was very fortunate to tour Y East and Mountain View a few weeks ago, and I know that there's a date scheduled for the board to have opportunity. I think it's November 3rd. Unbelievable schools, so, so great. It's going to be amazing for our kids when they go to those schools next year. You'll love seeing it. I also was able to kind of walk behind the hill, behind Legacy, to see the baseball, softball facility, soccer facility that's being -- the voters and the taxpayers and the citizens of this community in 2018 when they passed the bond did such a huge service for the students of our system. And we could never, I could never, ever stop thanking the community for what they've done in terms of the facilities for our community. Such great work. Sue and the RC group and the contractor is just amazing. So I'm real excited for you all to have an opportunity to see that November 3rd. And that is my report.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, great. Next, we have a department update and I'm going to ask Clarissa Hightower to provide us an update on teaching and learning and equity.
Good evening, members of the board and community. As Mike stated before, the teaching and learning update, you'll hear a little bit more about that in upcoming meetings, specifically Rob's request on Canvas. Julie wanted me to make sure that mentioned that she will be doing that for you in the meeting coming up. I'm going to give you some equity updates. So we had our first Equity Advisory Committee meeting on September 29th as a group, and we spent some time reacquainting ourselves with each other and we reviewed some highlights from last year and our hopes for this year for the group. We were also joined by Rob Perkins, who presented us with the draft equity results policy, as well as the proposed edits to the citizenship results policy and governance culture policy. You hear a little bit more about our feedback on that a little later. We also shared the Culture Responsive Practices presentation with all staff in the district via email, the one that Mike was referring to earlier. And we also shared it outside of district with some district leaders. I shared it myself in a regional equity leaders group that I'm in, and they themselves are utilizing it as they need. Got good feedback from them as well. And so the video is, is being well-used. Additionally, on October 8th, our schools had a professional development day. And in order to help support schools in continuation of their equity work, our department created and curated resources to deepen staff's understanding of the first practice area from the Ready for Rigor Framework of Awareness. We spent a full day with our instructional coaches, prepping them with that information so that they had a good grasp of it before October 8th, so that they could implement it as they needed in what was already being put together by building principals with that work in each building. And those are all of the TLE updates for this evening.
Thanks, Clarissa. Appreciate it.
Sure.
And that was a great video. I've been hearing comments from other people as well in other districts, so it was, it was good. I'm glad people are using it. Next up, we have some board governance work. The first, I would like to open a public hearing on the second reading of GC1 Board Purpose. I'm going to call on Director Perkins, who has some revisions on the policy. Rob?
Okay, as Clarissa said, after we passed our language out of first reading, I had an opportunity to present the information to the district's Equity Committee, which, as you know, for the sake of just repeating that, contains teachers, students, parents, other stakeholders. And I got to watch them have a really authentic and thoughtful response to the language that we were proposing and, and listen to their feedback on that. It is, it was a really good experience and they taught me quite a lot in the process of doing so. I'm just going to pull up the first reading document if I can. That's, this is sort of our dirty, filled with edits kind of document where we initially proposed the insertion of those two bullet points at the bottom, a change to each student's, a couple grammatical things, and the statements of belief. So this is kind of where, if you turned on track changes in words that we pass it forward. But I think it's important, and I'm pretty sure that a voice from the committee will appear when we open it up for public comment, to make some further suggestions. And so I'm planning to make two motions around this. One is to approve for second reading, but then after we get that seconded, to amend with language that they proposed so that we can have a discussion and then agree or disagree on that point. Then we vote twice, one for amendments and then one's for the, to button it up as a second reading and make that the policy. So at this point, I'm going to recommend that the board accept a motion in the second to approve for second reading, followed by that discussion about the amendments that they will bring forth, at which point it will be approved for second reading and approval. That's the recommendation.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to call for audience questions and comments. Do I have anyone who'd like to comment? Okay, come on. Okay, come on up to the podium, please, and please wear your mask for us. Thank you. Please, yeah. I just want to gently remind everyone, let's make sure we keep them on and keep our nose and mouth covered, please. Could you, can you state your name for the record, please?
Gary Wilson.
Is the mic on?
Is the mic on? Hello?
All right.
Yeah. The Cultural Responsive Practices presentation at the last board meeting had a lot of information. Thank you for providing an online presentation. After reviewing in detail, the graph on family engagement, you know, the scores were really low and like, it looked like about an average of 40%. And I'm really curious what the questions were, and I imagine there were multiple choice and what the answers were, and what ones were considered correct and which ones were considered incorrect. It would lend more credibility to the equity audit, and I was wondering if that could be provided?
Yeah, I mean, a request can be made for a copy of, of the questions. That's open, that's, you know.
And what the answers, you know, were, that were correct or incorrect?
Well, there's no correct or incorrect answers. It's just, they're surveying what people, how they feel about it, their experience about it, so it's not a right or wrong answer. So it'll be, but yeah, and you've seen some of that data already as part of their report, so.
Right. Well, I was wondering, you know, there's scores, so apparently there is some right or wrong answer, apparently, if you're scoring.
I think it's a percentage of how the people answered in certain, so it's probably like, and I don't, I don't know if I saw that, maybe Clarissa could help us with that, but I would imagine it's like one through five, and like 40% of people strongly agree or disagree or whatever. I'm not sure what the components are.
What we can do is get you a copy of it and have someone who's available to explain that to you, or, you know, go over anything that you might, questions you might have on that.
Yeah, it would make more sense, you know, because the scores are, like I said, averaging about 40% and different stakeholder groups, some were down in the 20s, some were high 40s, but yeah, to understand how that was put together, it would be good to see the questions, see what the answers, what score and what, to just have a better feel for what is being reported there.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. So let's make sure, Gary, let's make sure that we have your contact, oh, we've got your phone number here. Okay, so we'll have someone get ahold of you about that. Is that okay?
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comments to the board regarding this policy? Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
So I move at this point that the board adopt the policy modifications, GC1, as we approved it in the first reading, for our adoption.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Now I'm going to open things up for the board to ask questions. So the one that we have in Board Docs, is this the one with the revisions?
I thought, I didn't want to, I didn't want to be the committee's voice on this. I thought they were going to stand for a bit of a comment about this particular one, but.
Is everything in red changed from the one that I'm looking at here?
Everything in red here was changed from the policy we have on record now.
But what about from last time, in our last, when we brought this forward?
These are the changes from when we brought this forward. There's another document loaded into Board Docs with, and then there's a clean document, but that's with an, with an element of feedback.
But we're on second reading, right?
We're on second reading of GC1, yes.
But what I'm seeing up here, the red, are changes from when we made, what are the changes that were made from the committee, the committee work?
Those aren't on the screen yet.
Okay. Okay, so.
Got you.
Do we or don't we have comment from the committee regarding additional changes?
This one is, this one is the one we talked about yesterday.
Is there another policy that talks about how students?
Is there another policy that talks about how students?
Did we get a second?
There's a second policy maybe around students demonstrating compassion.
That's, that's coming up next.
So that's where we were going to add some comment. But there's this, in terms of this, and including the inclusion, everything is there based on what the committee, we went back and referred to the previous document that was presented in May. And so that, the safe and inclusive is the change, the big change that we made. So we believe, given a safe, inclusive, and equitable learning environment, each student will learn and excel versus it being the right environment. So that was the big change. Is that on the other document that we were just looking at?
That's, the one that's on the screen now is the one I'm about to move to amend.
Okay.
But that should capture the committee's recommendations for G C one.
It does capture for G C one.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I'm caught up now. Sorry about that.
I'm hoping I'm proceeding down the right path with this myself because there's a lot of changing going on here for a second reading. So I'm a little, I want to make sure we're proceeding as we need to.
Did you hear a second on the motion to approve? Then I'm going to move, and Julie, this is the, on the screen now is the sort of proposed final language. Based on the committee's recommendation, I'm going to move that we amend from our approval in first reading. Okay? Changing the right environment to a safe, inclusive, and equitable learning environment as presented there, so that it reads, "We believe, given a safe, inclusive, and equitable learning environment, each student will learn and excel when provided with authentically engaging work based on high standards." That's the motion.
Okay, so that's your move to amend?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and ask for a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all, okay. So now we'll take a vote to amend. All in favor?
Are we voting to amend or are we asking?
We're amending.
We're going to vote for amend. Do you have more questions, though?
So if we vote to amend, then that's it? Like?
No, then we have to go through and take a vote to accept.
As amended.
As amended.
Oh, okay.
And to, and then this will be the end of the second re, second reading, and then it will be passed. Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now we will take a vote to accept G C dash one Board Purpose for Approval as amended. Do we have a vote, or do we have, we can just do a straight vote at this point, right? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And G C one Board Purpose is approved as amended. Okay? Thank you. Next, we have a focus on student results. This is Results Policy R three Equity. And this is also a second reading and a renumbering of subsequent policies. I would like to open, this is a public hearing, on the second reading of Results Policies R three Equity and renumbering the Student Safety to R four, Social and Emotional Development to R five, and Citizenship to R six. I'm going to call on Director Perkins, who has revised the policy to give us a summary.
So as before, we had the, the first reading and we passed out R three. I'm actually looking for what we did and trying to get that on the screen. There it is. This is what we passed out on our first reading. And as before, and this is the actual text from the first reading, that's what I'm recalling. And as before, took the language and the invitation to present it to the district's Equity Committee in order to get their feedback. And they gave back quite a lot of feedback, which actually, I think, improved the policy proposal. So the same thing, we're going to move to accept for second reading, then move to amend, and then vote twice.
Okay, but I think we need to hear what these changes are because this is all kind of coming out as fast and furious here.
Yes, it is. Would you like me to speak to that or let the committee?
It's, I don't, it, it doesn't matter whoever would like to do that. I just want to make sure.
I think broadly, what they were advising us to do is to craft a policy that didn't call out differences in students. And their suggestion actually makes the results policy look more like those model results policies that were presented to us. And that there were some other minor language changes, which just really brought some clarity. But I want the board to hear that in their voice rather than mine. And then we can consider what they're proposing for us after that. So I recommend that we adopt this for second reading. And I'm also going to move an amendment at the proper time to incorporate some of their languages. I anticipate that we'll have a little more discussion about those amendments than with the last one.
Okay. I'm going to call for audience questions and comments then regarding this second reading on the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to discuss the term respect in the current reading of this results policy. So as an educator focused on educational equity, I appreciate the board's commitment to the student experience. Statements like "Experience is supportive and barrier-free learning environment," or "Experience achievement and narrowing the gap between the highest and lowest performing students." The Oxford Dictionary defines respect as "a feeling of deep admiration for someone or something that's elicited by their abilities, qualities, and achievements." The Equity Committee met in September, and we referred back to the proposed EPS Equity Policy Language from like last spring. And so these two issues, I want to just explain a little bit more around the term respect in this policy. And we want to caution the board from using the term respect in this policy at all. First, the board has openly acknowledged that students that are Black, Indigenous, and people of color and evergreen have historically and are presently facing inequities associated with aspects of their identities and their context. Have we earned the respect of these students and families, either in previous generations or currently? While intentions may have been good, the impact is present in the outcomes and disparities. Respect is a feeling one gains over time. Our policy should not place the complete onus on our Black, Indigenous, and students, and families of color to blindly respect an institution or individuals that have yet to address the systems where they are experiencing bias, discrimination, harm, feelings of fear, and lack of belonging. This policy should direct and organize the board's focus on the harmful practices, structures, and procedures that are generating the inequitable outcomes. So second, as we take on a more culturally responsive approach to teaching and learning, we're moving away from compliance-oriented practices. So, col, sorry about that. Culturally responsive practice is a mindset. One, where the principles that we attend to move away from forcing compliance and more towards partnership. And so it's essential that the board policy does not unintentionally signal that we need to maintain this antiquated approach to schooling that is in pursuit of compliance with authority or conformity. But rather, the policy could signal an approach to teaching and learning that centers the students and their humanity and encourages staff to do the same. So on behalf of the Equity Committee, I stand here to encourage you to remove respect from this policy and focus on asking students to be compassionate towards one another, towards the staff, and towards the system that is going to continue to work to advance racial equity.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So when you're talking about remove respect, are you talking about online, on three one, be respectful?
It would be both, from three one and three two.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. So instead, on three one, you would like it to read, be compassionate toward others of any race, ethnicity, or other difference, and just take out the be respectful part?
Yep.
And then on line three two, discuss controversial, controversial issues with civility and not have and respect?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay. I think that it's, I'm just going to be honest. I think there's a little challenge there because part of what, we, we definitely want our students to be civil and have civil discourse. One of the things I've talked about is just how things have happened in our own board meetings surrounding some of various different issues. I've been very appreciative of the civility that we have seen in how we're doing in opposed to other areas where we know it's been a different story. I, um, so I'm still having a hard time wrapping my mind around, I want to say disrespectful about respect in this situation. And that's just my own ignorance here. I'm just, I think I need a little more conversation about that. And maybe it happens outside of here. I, I don't know. But I just am, is there another word that we would put with civility? Or is it just and with civility?
Well, what I'm encouraging is just to consider the way respect is something that is earned. And so as a way for us to say that in this, we're not asking students to do something that is, is not a part of how they authentically feel about their experience.
Okay. That makes more sense to me.
And so sometimes, respect is about comply despite the fact that something might be harming me.
Okay. Thank you. That makes more sense to me. Now it's starting to click.
Can I ask another question? Because the one that I have in front of me has our changes that we made last time, correct?
Yeah.
The one on the board is the current with no changes that we made last time?
No, this is, this one is the first reading as we passed it last time.
As we moved it forward.
As we moved it forward. Yeah, with the changes. Because this is new policy.
But that, so then the ones with the red strikes on, that I'm looking at on my screen, don't have, they have that, and three point one, it's, I don't know. Well, maybe it's not three point one.
They do, and it's actually a slightly older version of the document than.
No, it's in there. It's the revise, there's a revision version with redded, which looks like some potential changes in the direction that Jamila is referring to. But in some of these, we still have the word respect in, within it.
That, that's why I'm confused too. But then three point one is be respectful and compassionate towards others. And then the rest of it is struck out.
Right.
Right.
So is the, because if that's the one that we approved, then why do I have the strikeouts here?
It isn't. The one that we approved is this language on the screen, which is a new policy. So all of this is new stuff with no strikeouts. It's what we discussed and put forward as the first reading approval. The modifications that the committee is suggesting are in part in the second document, the one that you have in Board Docs, with the exception of her comments about respect.
I don't think I have that.
It's what you're looking at, Julie. It's just the, it's still having, so like on, for number two, it crosses out what we have on three point two. And it says, "Discuss and engage in controversies and uncomfortable issues with empathy, civility, respect, and dignity." So it's still, I mean, it changes, it doesn't change the meaning. It gives a lot more, but it still has the word respect in it. So I guess that's kind of also where we're, because.
So the language of civility and dignity could be the revision.
And then just taking that word, so that is still a recommend, okay. That's, I think that was some, because we're looking at something that's got some edits on it, but still has that word respect in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wasn't something that I was able to get loaded into Board Docs after four thirty P M. yesterday when we had a final conversation about this.
Are there other, any other questions on the respect piece or anything I can add to that?
If you could call out the, the other pieces of the committee feedback about calling out differences in policy, would you like to talk to that a little?
Sure. I don't have the version that's in front of them, and so, there it is. Thank you.
There it is. Yeah, I just crossed out respect as well.
Can we bring down the?
So the only other, I think, Rob spoke to this earlier, but the other element is we wanted to make sure that we weren't othering students in the policy. So taking out others who are different, taking out race, ethnicity, difference, and just saying towards all, and that that would be inclusive. And so that was part of the feedback of what happened, I think, with one and three. And the last comment, I think, was just making sure that we are actively celebrating all elements of folks' identity. And so by calling those out, that's why it's like that.
It wasn't including their, that's what they suggested, right?
So I think the spirit behind our changes is just to make sure that the policy is not signaling anything around compliance, that we're pushing towards creating an environment where we're being supportive of students from all backgrounds, and making sure that, that we are just creating a policy that is really inclusive to reflect the spirit of what the first policy was stating around inclusion and safety.
So these are changes that I'd propose in a motion to amend after, in the middle of the Roberts Rules stuff.
Right.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it all because I, sometimes I'm to heck with Roberts Rules. I just want to get down to it and figure out what the heck we're doing so we make sure that we're being good to all and that they, everybody has a chance to have the best possible education.
Absolutely.
Experience that we can. So, okay. Was there anything else that you would like us to understand or know about as we move forward through this?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for the explanations. Okay. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir? Please come forward and state your name for the record. I didn't recognize you at first, Lauren. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I felt very, you know, it was a surfer.
You bask is doing a good job.
I'm just curious, when, when I hear the word results, I want to know immediately how something like this is measured. So I'm just curious as to whether this is an aspirational thing or whether it'll be something that can be measured and tracked over time.
And actually, the next step in the process is to have results that will come from the superintendent giving us an idea, you know, making sure that he's got the same understanding as we have and we're all on the same page, and then giving us some accountability measures so that we can measure. I mean, sometimes these are more challenging to figure that out. But you still have to have a way to measure and a way for us to monitor that things are changing and things are happening the way that we want them to. So that will be, the next step is hearing from Mike on what he interprets all this to mean. And we have to agree that, yes, what you're interpreting is what we intend. And then from there, he will put forward accountability measures that we will then hold him and the district accountable to.
Are there established measurements for this, these kinds of things?
There are some, yeah. And that's yet, and sometimes we have to create them. I mean, that's up to him to figure out.
Yeah. When we were doing this the last go-round, it constituted, I think, a combination of student survey data, academic success data, especially around the results policies. And it maintains a dynamism. And it maintains a dynamism, is that if we find that an interpretation or an indicator no longer aligns with the community's values or our values or even what we can do, then we can adjust them, and there's a process for that too.
Okay, I, for quite a few of them, it's, some of it feels very subjective on how it could be measured. So that tool for, for it to actually give valid information would be really critical. So I thought of that last time when you guys were reading it the first time, and I didn't ask anything then, but.
The results policies are aspirational, but aspirational with measurements is the way I think about them.
Yeah.
That's the only way we're gonna get to where we wanna go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it will most likely evolve as we learn more and understand more, have more resources available for accountability. I mean, it's all, we're walking into new territory in many ways, but.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Is there anyone else who'd like to have questions or comments to the board on this section? Okay, um, let's see, where are we? Okay, so now we are going to call for a motion. A motion to amend, are we at that point yet, or where are we?
I move that we adopt this policy as written on the screen here from our first reading.
Okay.
Second.
All in, and then?
And then a discussion, and then I move from here that we amend the policy, as given and recommended by our district's Equity Committee, namely that we strike respectful and, and the phrase of any race, ethnicity, or other difference from item one. We replace item two with language that reads discuss and engage in controversies and uncomfortable issues with empathy, civility, and dignity. Number three, again, striking with others who are different. And then number seven, they're replace and share perspectives stemming from their own unique identities, including their own racial, cultural, ethnic, and family identities. If you want me to put that up side by side, I will, but that's the motion is to amend in this fashion. Okay. And now we kinda sorta have it left and right.
I think in all this back and forth, I forgot to, I did not ask for the board's comments or questions. I apologize, there's a lot of changes that went on here for us.
I don't know entirely sure how. So there's what we passed in first reading, sorry for the small letters. And here are the, this is the motion to amend, require a second, and then we can talk.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay, so now I'd like to open it up for board to ask questions or have comments. So I, I get the changes, but some of the changes aren't in red from, that I can tell, because it's, it's it's difficult to toggle back in between two documents and to figure out exactly what's changed.
I'm trying to figure out.
So the one on the left-hand side is the one that we approved last time in first reading. We workshopped it and approved it. And then, um, there's recommended changes on the, one on the right-hand column. So, uh, for, for an example, number two, okay? So the first part is struck out because we took out the word respect. And then it says discuss and engage, so then it's just the new writing instead of how it's written?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a question about the uncomfortable issues. And forgive me if we discussed that before, but I, I mean, I feel like, just like to Lauren's point, like who, who decides what's uncomfortable, right? I mean, there.
Maybe instead of discuss, it's approach? Approach and engage?
I'm okay with the discuss and engage in controversies and issues. I mean, I don't know about why, what the uncomfortable, because there's all kinds of issues. I mean, but not all of them are uncomfortable. So.
The sense that I took from the committee was that some controversies are not uncomfortable and some non-controversies are uncomfortable.
I, and one other thing I'm gonna say, I feel like at the second reading time, there's a lot of changes. And for us as a board, if we're going to approve this tonight, I feel like the work with, which I feel very important that we went to the committee, but I feel like that work should have done probably even before we had a first board workshop. And so we had the recommended changes from that group at that time, because now it's like we're at second reading. And for many of us, just understanding what's on, you know, on the docket for changes.
Yeah, because the changes we have here are up there, but they're also interwoven with new changes, but not fully.
Don't forget Equity, the text on the left is entirely new policy.
Yes, that we workshopped and then had a first reading.
But you've also provided us with another, within Board Docs, we've got a, like, the one in here, the one that we have with those strikeouts. Three point seven on the left. The only change is to remove contribute, but seven over here is completely different wording.
This is the document that you have in Board Docs.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like that.
But none of those are over here.
I couldn't edit a PDF and color everything just precisely so.
But that's why there's confusion is to.
Yes, I agree that, yes.
So, um, just procedurally, what can happen is we have moved from the motion, but if we're still feeling like we need more time on this, then when we go to a vote, if we do not have enough votes to move forward, then we will take, we can go back and revisit this and
We can.
and have the time to have more explanation, make sure we're all on.
We can decide that the, if, if the motion to amend here is defeated, then we go back to this language on the left here and we vote to approve that.
Before I, before I would feel comfortable voting to move it forward, I'd like to see it in a clean copy of the final version. Because I think it would help me understand what it, how it reads without the confusion of our first one that we approved in first reading with the edits that we see in our Board Docs to the new language.
We could table this. We don't have to vote to approve or not. If there are too many questions, too many changes coming forward, I mean, we may want to, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying we're not locked in. I mean, at this point, this body can, can say no, and we can go back.
Does this affect our renumbering?
No.
We can still renumber.
We can renumber, we can approve the first reading language on the left without approving any amendments, we can do that.
But we might want to approve the amendments with more of a clarity and understanding about it.
Yeah, I would prefer not to approve it with, because if we're going to make changes, I'd rather our final document be what we want the final document to be.
And I'm not hearing that anybody thinks that what's up there is wrong or whatever.
You wanna see the clean final document as amended? I might be able to just put that on the screen.
We've already, we already approved that, we're now into the amendments.
Are you asking, Julie, are you asking to see a clean final document?
Of the, yeah, of the amendments.
With the amendments. Part of this is just technical, it's getting the, um, getting the stuff out of that.
I think part of what we're wrestling with is this is such an important policy to us. And we just wanna know that we're making all the right
Yes.
decisions at this point, because we do have a lot invested in this work and wanna make sure.
So, I agree, if I, if I take out the markup, this is the clean result. Mostly the clean result. And it reads, students will recognize value and celebrate cultural, ethnic, and other diversities. Students will be compassionate toward others. Discuss and engage in controversies and uncomfortable issues with empathy, civility, and dignity. Demonstrate cultural awareness and competency in their interactions. Apply principles of equality and equity in their roles as students and student leaders. Have equitable access to educational resources. Experience a supportive and barrier-free learning environment. And finally, celebrate and share perspectives stemming from their unique identities, including their own racial, cultural, ethnic, and family identities. That's the clean copy as proposed for amendment.
I mean, I don't have any problem with how it's reading, but if we're following our procedures, putting them through, then we're supposed to, I mean, just not seeing all the markups and the changes and what was there before and having to go back and forth on it.
So can we just, at this point, let's push our procedure out of the way and let's just, are, where are we with this as it's worded now? Do we have concerns, questions? Embracing, I mean, where are we at at this point with everybody's perspective on it?
I'm not a fan of one. Be compassionate towards others. It's kind of, you know, when we're, it kinda puts it in there with that respect word, respectful. I mean, it's, it's hard to be compassionate towards someone if, you know, you can be, have a conversation, a civil conversation, but if, it's, you know, it's hard to be compassionate if you're having a uncomfortable and intense conversation with someone else. I think compassion is not usually the, it's, you know, civil and respectful, I guess that word just keeps coming back. But, I don't know, I just don't, I, the, I'm having a hard time with one. But I can't seem to think of another word to put in there.
I'm looking up the, because I was.
I did, I Googled the word, and I'm like, I just, yeah, it just doesn't fit for me, but I was like,
What was, what was the?
Students will be civil and empathetic or have empathy?
Well, then that says, well, that's the next part.
That's number two.
But the, so. Can, can we get that definition, the respect, the respect or respectful, what, how that changes the? Because it, because it.
Well, it just was removed out of one.
Yeah, but from before it was in there, but the, the definition of why it was removed because it.
What, Jamila had?
Yeah, because it talks about like authority or, I'm sorry.
Higher special regard, quality or state of being esteemed, expressions of higher special regard or deference, coming out of Merriam-Webster instead of Oxford, so it's.
The word respect or respectful?
Respect.
And if, and I think
To refrain from interfering.
The thought is that if you respect, respect has to be earned. And we cannot, um, we don't wanna force anyone to be respectful of somebody who hasn't earned that respect and hasn't treated them, I mean, I would also say it has to be reciprocal. And that's a whole nother conversation, I'm sure, but it does make sense, but yet it feels like be compassionate towards other, for some reason doesn't feel like it's enough.
Yeah, I mean, that, maybe that's what I'm struggling with, it's just, I don't know, it's, it's, yeah, I'm just, I'm having, I'm struggling with number one. I mean, all the rest of them, and maybe it's just that we remove it, but, I mean, because it really is all, after we removed all of the other stuff, it almost doesn't.
I'm fine with all of it too, I, I, the respectful part, I don't know, because it feels like that does add something in just what I'm reading for definitions about respectful and what it means to be a respectful person. But the, the one in number two, the uncomfortable, I don't know how I feel about that one.
This almost should have come to a workshop for a.
This, this level of change?
Yeah.
Should have come to a workshop?
Well, here's, I mean, we could go ahead and approve it, and then we always have the ability to come back and make revisions and, I mean, none of our policies are chiseled in stone, and if we want to add or revise any of it, we can always bring it back for a first or second reading with the, with the new changes.
One, one thing that I think about is that this isn't the only body of text that goes with a district results equity policy. We're giving the superintendent and his leadership the opportunity to define the words as they understand them and to reflect that definition back for our approval. The interpretation and indicators of respectful, respect could include the cautions and the shape and framework that we're looking for, because we certainly don't, um, at least as far as I can tell from the consensus here, doesn't sound like we want to impose a policy that requires students to express unearned respect.
That we don't what?
Express an unearned respect is what I'm hearing.
Well, we don't want to, yeah, they don't, shouldn't be forced to respect somebody who isn't treating them with respect in return. I mean, I'm almost wondering if it should be, on number one, be, be civil and compassionate towards others. I mean, I know when people come to a board meeting and they address the board, they may not respect our, what we're talking about or respect to us as people or whatever, it really doesn't matter. But I do expect a certain civil way of discussing things in here that doesn't include screaming at me or threatening me or, or whatever, I'm just being extreme here. But I'm just saying, and I, I would expect the same thing in our classrooms, in our schools, that nobody is going to be talked to or treated in a way that breaks them down, that treats them, and I expect it to be a two-way street. I also expect our students to be civil with their teachers. You may disagree with them, but there's a civility there that's just part of social discourse that we need to have, and we are lacking a lot of that in our country right now. And we need to get back to that so that we can all make good decisions for our world.
I like the civil in front, because I think it frames the compassionate part. Because if you just come up to someone and say, you're required to be compassionate, it's kinda like, okay, well, the, it, there's, but framing it with being civil and compassionate, I like that better.
Victoria, I think we have some comments from the.
Okay, Bill, I saw your hand up first, you wanna come up to the podium, please, thank you.
I'm just wondering, can I make a parliamentary suggestion for where you're at right now? Is that?
Go ahead, this is new territory for us.
It is, and this is like really good discussion you're having right now. And it seems, you know, it's feeling a little rushed. The, the way that I would do it, if this was my meeting, I would say postpone to date certain. The, the way that I would do it, if this was my meeting, I would say postpone to date certain, that, that you have an amendment, a motion on the table. You don't want to table it because that would just do away with it, you'd have to remove it and everything. You postpone to date certain gives you a chance to see all the versions, look up the words, maybe feel more comfortable with it. That's just a suggestion, do with it what you want.
Yeah, so what you're saying, Bills, we would have to vote on the amendment and then.
You wouldn't have to take a vote immediately.
No, I could, I could just ask the president to postpone and.
The decision.
Yeah, just to postpone this motion, which would also postpone approval of the full policy until a certain date.
Here's, here's kind of what I've been thinking, because this equity policy has been so important to us for a long time, that I don't feel like we want to rush through it and get it out there and not have it be something that we all mutually agree upon. And we don't, I don't think we also, we want to publish it and then just change it in a couple of weeks because we didn't, we weren't quite sure about the wording that we all wanted to use.
So, so I think we do want to maybe go ahead and shelve this.
Do Marty have it? I think Marty had something. Did you want to come up, Marty? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. My little thing is right in front. Hey, Marty.
Hi there. So I was just going to make this, make it real simple, just replace sympathetic with understanding.
Which, which number, Marty?
Sympathetic?
Number one.
Oh, you mean compassionate?
Yeah, replace compassionate with sympathetic, I have one of them.
Sounds like I could withdraw the motion and ask that it be deferred to a workshop.
We workshop it at the next board meeting and then we come together after that.
Could do that. What do you want to do with the original first reading language? I don't, I don't mind revising it as quickly as next month, this month, because I think people know what's coming down the pike. Then they can begin the work on interpretation and indicators without necessarily waiting for the official part.
Yeah.
And then we can pick this up in workshop, second meeting in October, first meeting, or the meeting in November, meeting in December, but still have this expression with an established policy with the, with the first reading language and, so if we're thinking about the first reading language here, let's adopt it, but also right here in this meeting, schedule workshop to amend it and then just go through two readings, December, January, to make sure that the committee's feedback is included and that we, we understand what we're doing. I don't mind that at all. But I would like to approve R three today. It just means that we have two readings of whatever amendments we did.
So you want to approve it as we had it from last time?
I think we already did.
We know it's a first reading, but we approved it as first reading, so now it would be second reading and final approval.
So we're just going to put off the, any amendments, so we make sure that what we amend is exactly the verbiage that we want.
But then we go back to my point, if we're going to approve something, have it in our policies, with knowing that we're just going to change it?
Yes.
I mean, we're close, I mean, we're, we're close, but it seems like we're being nitpicky on like one word, but I think it's an, it's an important word and, or, you know.
Well, there's several changes from the policy that we approved in first reading to what's being proposed tonight. There's more than just a couple of words.
There are a lot. It's true.
So what I was actually going to say was be sympathetic and understanding. To replace passionate, compassionate.
Okay, so we got more to think about. Yeah.
No, that's good.
Madam Chair, I withdraw the motion.
So I think, I like the idea of moving us forward with the original, with all the amendments, we workshop them, and then we, we bring them back for amendments to the, to the initial policy. I think, Mike, you should have enough to work off of, to at least get a start on an interpretation and.
Longer.
Yeah.
So are you proposing that we approve the?
We approve the first, what we approved last, what we moved forward in the first reading. We approve that, and then we go through a workshop and re, first and second reading for the amendment side of it, so that we have time to work on that. And to make sure that we're getting everything in there that we want to make sure. What would you, do you have a different recommendation?
I just, I just keep going back to, if it's a brand-new policy, do we want to approve something that we're going, we know we're going to amend?
I'm with Julie on this one, it's, just seems like it's rushed and to put it out there when it's not our best work is, I, I think is not doing us a good service.
Rob?
That sounds like not a consensus to me, and I'll go along, you know, we can't vote two to two and have it prevail. We don't want to drop it, so the suggestion, the suggestion, not, not, not table, that's, I think it gets technical and we don't want to get over technical, but to defer to the next board meeting, defer consideration to the next board meeting.
We have to have a time in between, before we're putting, if we're going to go to a vote to approve this, we have to have workshop and have more information and have the ability to really have a good discussion about what this looks like.
Couldn't we just bring it back to a second reading again next time?
Okay, but how are we going to talk about, how are we going to get the answers that we're looking for between now and then?
Well, I, I feel like, so if we were going to bring it back to a second reading, then would we have to, well, we can't approve it because it's a second reading, so then it would be final, correct?
It would be final, but policies can always be amended, so.
That's why I'm saying, then can we defer it to a second reading for next time? And then we could have, all, each of us could do our work. Come back, because I just, I, I feel like then we have to start the whole process over again. If we do workshop, then we have to bring it back to the first reading, and then we're back, then like Rob said, we're going to be into December's meeting, correct?
It's going to be imperative, and I actually, in some ways, like that idea because Rachel's not here, and I really feel strongly that this work, because there's a lot of nuance to it, should have all of the opinions of this board. This is, this has been a long time in coming to this level, and to have all five of us here would make me feel better, and that's just one perspective about this, but.
So if, if we were thinking about the next three board meetings, that's second meeting in October, right? With the one meeting in November and the one meeting in December, do we need time to reach a final consensus on this language into December, so that we're workshopping in October, and then maybe approving it in November or December? I'm trying to think of a date for final approval so that we can defer to the specific date.
I would like to see it finally approved as soon as possible. So if there's a way that we can do this at our next board meeting, if everybody can do their due diligence and, and we can, we can't make decisions, but we can certainly, we can each do our homework, do our homework, yeah, and we can have conversations with Clarissa's team if any of us have questions and need clarity on anything. I think it gives us time to not rush into it because it is so important to us. But I don't want to drag it out and run, like you said, run it through the process. I'm kind of feeling like we're, we're, we're motivated to make this right, as, just as each individual board member, I know the motivation is there. So I think if we can get ourselves together with these changes, because we're kind of, these are kind of coming at us without just any chance for real discussion about it. And then, then we can come and have a discussion where we can yea or nay and have, feel like we really are coming at it from a clear point of view.
Of course. Then the date certain that I'm going to propose we defer this to is October 26th.
I would, that's good, because that's.
Do we need a second on that?
The next board meeting.
Yeah, I think we need a second and a vote on that, and then it just is on the agenda on October 26th. And let's let that be the motion to amend. I'll just kind of rescind my withdrawal there. So that we can pick that right back up with the amendments and then discuss the language.
But we're not going to approve this.
We're not going to approve this if I, if I'm moving here to defer to a date certain.
Right.
We're not going to approve this, we're going to hold this all until the next meeting.
Right.
And complete the work in the next meeting.
Yeah, that's where we need to be. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
So yes, vote would be to do that.
Are we, are we all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone's opposed? Okay, I think that's the, the strongest, smartest way to proceed with this and feel like we really make sure this is what we want it to be.
Yes.
Okay, and it absolutely, I'm, I have to be really clear on this, that we appreciate the input that we had tonight. And, you know, a lot of times we don't get input and we just move forward and stuff, but on times when we are having input that feels compelling, you know, that we aren't there yet, it's really important for us to pull the reins in and do the work and come back and make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and, and that we feel like morally it's the right thing to do as well. I mean, there's some, there's some emotion tied into this, at least for me, I know, I'm pretty sure there's for the rest of you, that this has to be right, and it has to work for all kids. And that's, that's our bottom line here. Okay, so Laurie, you got all that? You poor thing.
The minutes just have to read. R three equity deferred to date certain, October 26th.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. For those of you who've never been to a board meeting, this is not normal, but it's important work, so appreciate you sticking with us on this. Okay, so, Mike, did you want to interject anything in all this? You've been awfully quiet over there.
No, I think that you guys got to figure it out, and then we'll respond to it.
Okay. And you see the writing on the wall, pretty much, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next up, we have our results policy, R six citizenship, and this is also a second reading. I'd like to open the public hearing on the second reading of renumbered results policy, R six citizenship. I'm going to call Director Perkins, who has revised the policy, and will give a summary of the revisions.
Okay, so the initial proposal was to remove, and you can see it on the, on the screen screens, but the split screen, I'll raise it up there, was to remove the line, demonstrate cultural competency from the existing citizenship policy because we moved that concept into the proposed equity policy. When I met with the citizen committee, or the district equity committee, and showed them this base, what I basically thought was a housekeeping element, what came back was a real sense of desire to rewrite the citizenship policy in order to emphasize and specify some very different things. They were also in, I think, relation to the, the comment that Mr. Hightower made when he came and spoke last time, is that there's, is a definition of citizenship that kind of leaves people out of a school community, and if we're not careful about how we define them, that could become an issue. This is the takeaway that I had from his comment, is that if we phrase that differently, we, we would be more inclusive. Now, citizenship is a catchphrase for a lot of people. But the proposal here was to simply remove the line, and I'm, I'm going to recommend, based on our last thing, a little differently than I did before, could we go ahead and defer this one as well to the next meeting? Folks might want to come in and talk about the citizenship policy, but I'm also going to recommend that after October 26th, we also set this into a workshop for modifications based on their feedback. We should really have a chance to learn what that was, and I think a workshop is probably a better place to take that report.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a motion to defer to October 26th the consideration of removing that line.
Okay. Do I have a second?
In other words, let's not do this now.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got it, Laurie? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
And then on, okay, so that's going to be up on the next agenda, and we'll have that conversation then. Next up is citizen comments. This is time for people who'd like to address the board regarding anything that's not already on the agenda, is not legal or personnel in nature. And for those that haven't been here before, other than to ask clarifying questions, the board cannot engage in discussion about it because it's not something that was posted on the agenda, and there might be people who'd want to have, be part of that conversation. So I have two people on, huh, oh, I have two people. The first up is Lisa, is it Carlo? Great, Lisa, come on up.
Hello, thank you for having me. So do I state my name? Is that how this works, or?
I already stated it for you.
So you stated it for me, so I'm good to go.
You're good.
Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm proud to be here. I know that I'm speaking for many, many people that don't have this gift to speak. It's very stressful. We all have children, school-aged children, you know, this is a hard time to be here. I first want to thank all the parents that are out there that, you know, have the same feelings as me and that are fighting behind the scenes. I want to thank my, my son, who's been in a mask all day for eight hours and who's been here for the last two hours, still sitting with his mask, and I want to apologize to you, baby. My healthy son, who doesn't need to be wearing a mask. Frankly, it makes no logical sense to me. I mean, obviously, you guys are all vaccinated, you have been forced to vaccinate, or you've been mandated to vaccinate, or you chose to vaccinate, whatever it may be. We're fully six feet apart and still forced to wear a mask. And yes, I'm going to wear my sparkly mask, you know, because I think it's pretty much a joke. I mean, if you want to talk about a mask, this gentleman right here has the N95, which is designed for a virus, and a surgical mask that most of everybody is wearing is designed to help a surgeon not spit on their open wounds of their patients, not, has nothing to do with the virus. I'm sure you guys probably already know this, but, you know, I'm here to speak loud and proud. I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet so I can get home to my babies and feed them dinner. I did want to touch on a couple of things I heard. Ironically, the, the lovely lady that was talking about blind compliance, that, you know, that's pretty much what I'm here to talk about. You also mentioned about what's morally right for, for our children, and there was one other thing you said that was right on the menu that I can't, I can't remember exactly, but it's, it's gonna, you know, mirror the tone that I have today. I know that you would love, sir, to have your enrollment rise. I do hear the heart of the, of the, of the school district that we just want our children in session and, and not at home, and I respect that. But I do have to say that there is a huge army of us out here that are ready to walk and bring that, bring that number down if the forcefulness continues on the masks and vaccines. You know, you guys say that you're here to serve the children, but I see you're serving Governor Inslee first. He is a servant to us. He, we do not serve him. This is, we are Americans and this is, you know, we have the freedom to stand up for these things. I'm gonna get to my paper. At this point in the game, I could come here to throw science and studies that asks, especially the ones our children are wearing, are absolutely worthless against the virus. I could bring you actual CDC statistics stating under one percent of children are seriously affected by COVID. I could bring you countless articles about faulty COVID tests. I could bring you federal law codes as well as the United States Constitution and international law set in stone with the Nuremberg Code siding with our stance against forcing masks and the vaccine. I could bring all of this to you, but it has already been done by parents all over the country for weeks and weeks. And yet, there you sit complying with the single man's commands, unwilling to stand for what is right with our children, our country and our future. I have had multiple conversations with my child's principal on this issue and I hear his view that the focus needs to be on the kids attending class in person and not on the masks. I also hear his view as he states his job is on the line to comply. You understand this is tyranny. This is tyranny against him, our kids, you and me, cruel and unnecessarily forcing and threatening our jobs and education. And you understand this is just the beginning of the pull for control, do you not? You do understand what is happening with the mandated vaccine and their end goal, do you not? You do understand the risks of the new vax and why they're pushing it so hard, do you not? This is an evil political agenda of control. I'm sure deep down you all realize something is very wrong here. Let my words ring, this is not the time to get comfy because you are in fear of losing your job. This must be approached together with strength, bravery and numbers. We the people willing to stand for freedom, medical freedom, truth, integrity and our future. If things don't change, let my words ring, it will not be good for any of us in this room for many reasons. Legally, there absolutely is liability in your lap with the forcing of masks and upcoming attempt at forcing our kids to be vaxxed. Yours as well as Inslee's. The only thing he's using to his advantage is an emergency order, which there is no emergency. I am here to speak for so many others who feel the same, but do not have the gift to do this. And as it's been said, we will be back, we will not back down and we are Americans, we plan to act like it.
Thank you Lisa. Gary Wilson. Hi Gary.
Gary Wilson again. I mainly signed up for, I wasn't sure if I was gonna be able to comment earlier about that family engagement graph and, yeah, equity, the scores, the equity audit. But since I'm up and just, you know, watching today and previous, two weeks ago, you know, and I can understand what you're trying to do and we all wanna be equal and fair and give everybody, you know, the chance to learn. But it seems like we're kind of losing focus on, you know, teaching these kids reading, writing, arithmetic and science. From what I understand, the state of Washington, kids, the standards, kids are like in the, what, fifty percentile? They're not passing according to standards. And I know in Oregon, they've thrown out the testing at, you know, upon graduation or for graduation. It seems like we're forgetting why we're really here and why we really want sending our kids to school to learn. I really don't wanna see my daughter become a social justice warrior. I mean, those are values I will share with her, my wife. Not the school, the school, it's not the school's job, frankly. Please get back to reading, writing and arithmetic and, and science, what schools have always represented and would appreciate you guys doing. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you being here Gary. Do we have anyone online that would like, that signed up? Okay, all right, I appreciate the citizen comments that we've heard tonight. Next up, board comments. Do we have any board comments?
I don't have anything tonight.
My calendar. So I was with Jenny at the Henry Alax and Cascadia Tech moment with Pacific Region of the National School Board Association. So yeah, we had people from Alaska to California, Nevada, the whole western half of this country, with the exception of Hawaii, I guess they're in a different area, to see our schools and, and how they function and how they guide people into the, get our students into the pathways there. The takeaway from that, the, the Washington folks actually invited me back to dinner, so I was down talking with them at Gray's in the Harbor, at Gray's, Gray's, it's not the Harbor, it's at the Hilton, Gray's at the Hilton, about that. And I heard them say, your, your Health and Bioscience High School is amazing. I've never seen anything like it. It's exactly the thing that we want for our kids. This was a Tejus Sound area director, this Riverside School District, it's the name of that one. Issaquah was there, a couple others, Sunnyside from South Mid, around the Akma area.
Yes, a number of districts were there, we know that.
But just the same response from all over the state is just how far ahead our programs and offerings are than even elsewhere in Washington and especially elsewhere in the United States. To the point where Tim Garcha says to me, your schools are, are a statewide and national model for what vocational education could be. So it's really heartfelt, they were very, very impressed with Henry Alax High School.
Which is very strong and, just for the record, very strong in math, science, social stuff. I mean, all the three Rs and then some. And that's why it is a model and it is part of our bigger curriculum to make sure that all kids have those skills.
But I wanted to pass that along especially to you Vic, cause I, I had to mention your name and the efforts that you and Joan Skelton and Todd Juzria and the others had making sure that the school got built and the create.
Thank you.
You know, it's like the innovation around financing it came from the stimulus and the way that Mike set that up. That is important to say, is that they are just blown away by what we've been able to accomplish here and they want that for their, their districts. If there's a way that, the next time you talk to Joan, would you tell her please?
I will, she'd be thrilled to hear that, that was ten years, ten years in the making for that school.
Jaws agape, it was really amazing to see how people were responding to our students. They stood up at the end of the luncheon at the Cascadia thing and gave the students a standing ovation. I think that's the first time I've ever seen an event group giving the students a standing ovation. It was just such a good day.
That's great.
I think Cascadia usually gets a standing ovation.
Do they?
Yeah, LCC and they usually do.
LCC, oh, I was thinking of like our, our, our community lunches, our school tours and things. Don't make a practice of that there, but it was impressive, I just need to see.
So you were there?
Yes, I was, I unfortunately did not get to attend the Henry Alax tour, so I met them at Cascadia for that tour and went with a group with Joan, so that was great to get to know Joan a little bit more, Joan, right?
Yep.
Okay. You were just talking about Joan and I wanted to make sure that I.
Joan Skelton, no, she's in Utah right now.
It's been one of those days. So yeah, that was a incredible tour, I always love going to Cascadia and to see all of the programs that we offer our students and the opportunities that our students are given and just having the conversation with the directors about, you know, it's the college and career paths and it's not college for everybody and just the amount of programs that we offer, it's, it is really incredible. And it, it's nice for us, I think, to also be able to kind of be reminded of those and going into the schools cause things change frequently and what they're doing and what they have out and a lot of different things. I saw some very huge election signs that belonged to Shane Gardner. They were using them in the, the hangers.
Vibration.
Yeah, on the tables, cause they're really sturdy and so I had to laugh. I was like, I haven't seen one of those signs in a really long time. But yeah, no, it was a incredible tour and lunch, everybody was extremely impressed. The students arrived at Cascadia at seven thirty in the morning and it was a volunteer option. They got to sign up to, I mean, it wasn't part of their grade, it wasn't, they weren't getting any credit for it, it wasn't extra credit. They were just offered the opportunity and they came in and they had a full house in the kitchen, you know, cooking and gave us an amazing tour of the kitchen and yeah, it was great. It was, you know, we had people from all over and just to hear the differences in the different states because we are always or often with people from Washington and even some, you know, some Oregon sometimes, but to have people there from Utah and Arizona and just kind of really have conversations with them, that was, that was great. Just reminds me that maybe, you know, one of these days we'll get back to the national school board meeting, so we'll see.
Yeah.
One of the things at Henry Alax that I ought to mention as well is that if you remember last May when we had three students from the high school there talking with us about student inclusion and equity and so forth. One of them graduated, Alani Baldwin is at UW, but the other two were presenting at Henry Alax and their programs. I got a chance to talk to one of them and, and kind of catch up a little bit. It was nice to see them there and they recognized and they're watching, watching what we're doing with our policies.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Thanks for doing that, I was out of town or I would've joined you, but can't miss my annual trip.
I unfortunately, I've got my kid's basketball scheduled late, so he had his first basketball game that morning, so I came late to the tours, but fortunately I was able to work it out.
We have representation there and that's what matters, that's great. I'm waiting for, since we have the new campus here with our other specialty schools, I'm, I'm starting to wonder when that will start creating, you know, the visitors and stuff cause this is such a unique campus, that I think it will be a model for what other districts can do for our kids with, you know, different needs than sometimes kids have in a comprehensive school. So that's, that's awesome.
I agree.
Taking kids where they're at, from where they're at and moving them forward, so I appreciate you guys doing that, yeah. Julie, did you wanna add anything?
No.
Okay.
Sorry I missed it, but I'm glad you guys were there to represent.
Okay, well, that is good. Okay, so next up, we have future agenda items. Obviously, we're going to be dealing with these, our homework with these policies from tonight, so I think that's key as far as keeping that process moving as quickly as we can and not, you know, dilly-dalling about it. So I think we got our work cut out for us with that. Lori and I and Jenny will get together and talk about what that all looks like for the next agenda. Okay. Does anyone have anything else that they wanna add to, to our agenda items, future agenda items? Okay. Well, I'm going to announce that we need to go into recess, it's seven twenty. And we'll, we'll sign documents and return for a workshop discussion on the new equity operational expectation, the legisla, a legislative report and a discussion on the levy followed by an executive session to review the performance of a public employee, which is expected to last forty-five minutes. So we appreciate everybody who joined us tonight and we are now in recess. Okay, everybody, I think we'll get started. Whoops, where's my mask? So first up, we have discussion on the new operational expectation policy OE dash X equity?
Number to be determined.
Okay. See here, if I can find it. Hang on, I'm just trying to get it up on my screen here. Okay. So. Mike?
I think it's Rob. I was trying to work this to, OEX equity as a new operational expectation. If you've got what was placed in board docs, then. And here we are. The idea behind this first draft is, I think we examined some of this at our last workshop, month ago or? Yeah, I think it was a month ago. Was, this is my first kind of shot at developing an operational expectation around equity, again, drawing from the district equity committee's wording and work to produce something that can translate into solid indicators that's a measurement of compliance, right? Operational expectations are about compliance. So came up with six items centered around access, then learning environments, then barriers, removing the barriers, and conversations and curriculum. In no particular order, just as I went down the, the equity committee's work to pull out things that are operational, operationalizable, is that, is that a term we could use? I don't know.
What was that again?
Operationalizable. Can, can be, can be turned into really concrete measurements that indicate compliance or not in compliance. So this is the first shot.
Has, have we had any other committees or anything review this for their input?
I did not present this when, when I was meeting with the district committee on the twenty ninth. I don't remember that I presented this explicitly because it wasn't past its first reading and that was kind of the subject at the time. So no, I don't, I don't have a lot of input from people outside of our conversations about the wording here or the possibility. About the only point of, point of feedback I could get is that they've begun to understand that an operational expectation policy is where some of this would sit. Cause I heard some questions from one of them about how to build indicators and how to, you know, build that into the problems of practice and theories of action kind of approach that they take to keep performance indication. But no feedback on the actual language.
Okay. So Mike, have you had time to kind of look at this and think about it at all?
You know, I, no, I mean, I'm not saying I haven't had time, but I haven't really looked at it that much, but I kind of feel like as we go through the conversation over the next few, we'll, we'll react to whatever you all come up with and then interpret and come up with our ways that we would monitor it. I mean, to me, it, it just kind of aligns with everything else you're doing.
I wanna make sure that we don't have any verbiage in there that is gonna cause us to rethink everything. So I wanna make sure we're addressing it before it's up for a first reading so that we can make sure that we're being sensitive to what the needs are of people.
With the exception of the changes that were. With the exception of the changes that were suggested about, um, changing things like housing status for homelessness, uh, poverty becomes level of affluence, things that Margaret suggested in our one workshop before we began the, the other policy work. Uh, the language comes largely from the Equity Policy Committee's, uh, work as far as I could, as far as I could tease it out in terms of OE stuff.
Right.
The operative question would be, can we find in indicators that will tell us about whether students have the access to opportunities, resources and support, what the learning environments are like? And I can imagine a couple of things, but I could never be complete about it the way that a full cabinet working on this would or that kind of thing. I wonder if there's something missing from an operational expectation that is, uh, easy to show the public.
Mm-hmm. Comments from all of you out there?
So we can leave the word respectful in there? We just spent an hour.
I know, that's what I'm, what I'm kind of getting at. Um, so I want to make sure we don't have any other words that have different meanings to different people in a way that could be counterproductive.
I guess my thought would be that the work that you're doing to kind of come together on the other would need to occur and then this would spin off that. So like putting this ahead of the actual po-, results policy, um, doesn't make sense to me.
The language should match.
Yeah.
Like, like mine. So I'm just going to be another file or from there for those conversations, the other one's uncomfortable conversations. This one's for us, like they're, um, meaningful and powerful. So I wish I liked that for all of you better.
Is that a suggestion for the wording of the other policy from, because that's, that happened before?
Yeah. Yeah. Here, here it feels more positive, where the other one feels, um, feels uncomfortable. First, we're going to engage in meaningful conversations that I agree with Mike, that it should line up the language and the wording.
Doing a different thing, let's, uh, maybe the same data informs both the policies. This is supposed to be about the actions of the superintendent and other district leadership. But the other one is a focus on students. Do you think that, uh, is there a difference between the data that you'd gather for a focus on students as opposed to superintendent and operational expectations?
Well, one of the questions here is if you look at number one, in our other policy, we took out all of the race, ethnicity, cult-, you know, all of those things to just all, you know, to all. But does that need to be this specific here? Um, considering it's what we expect the superintendent to do. I mean, these, I mean.
This was kind of meant to mirror the, the legal list of groups that's found in Washington statute.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with that phrase change to remove the exclusionary language from the thing we're saying. Right? So this, in this case, it's kind of a match to an RCW or a WAC somewhere is what I was thinking about.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, and it seemed like an appropriate place to put the whole list, because it's an operational policy rather than an aspirational policy, right? Um, so there landed the whole list as mostly as the committee suggested it.
I want to make sure we don't, I want to go back to what you just said about aspirational versus operational. I want to make sure it's very clear that yes, you can look at our policies, the policies that we've been discussing tonight in an aspirational way, but they are in no way not to be something we want to achieve and to be taken not as pie in the sky or a dreamland or blah, blah, blah. Um, sometimes I worry when someone says, well, that's just an aspirational goal, but no.
But, you know, I remember, uh, when we began the coherent governance model, that the results policies were aspirational in terms of progress toward, uh, but didn't necessarily carry that compliance kind of standard. Uh, I don't know what you think. So yeah, aspirational still has to have an interpretation, still has to have supporting data uh, and a way for the, for us to see which direction we're going.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is more of a binary either or, in or not in compliance kind of idea and wording. It means can you show that students have access to that learning environments are and how can you show that is sort of the next piece of that?
And we'd have to go, we'll go through that process of determining and identifying how we would do that. I just think if, if they kind of tie together, it makes sense that the lang-, maybe there's more detail here, but if there's a question about whether to use respect or not to use respect, they would think you'd want to be consistent or like Julie's saying. If robust is a word that you want to use, then that's used robust, so that there's consistency. But I'm sure that we can come up with ways to interpret what you mean and then how to measure that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I mean, even the predictability of outcome is of the measurement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Affecting that, changing that over time. That's one of the measurements.
Um, thoughts from Brian?
Look, I heard, what I heard you say about the nature, I think people can every one of these, there's ways to measure. But if people plan out, you still work with the other two. This is, I'm not saying it's easy, but you can measure this from a teacher perspective, student perspective, and then also for results like Mike's saying. If we can remove barriers, then to me, to me, and I'm not a works to a person, but you guys are out here, it says opportunities, resources and supports. That's the key. And also not just identifying the differences and other problems or something, but removing those barriers, there's ways to measure that as well. For the student experience or the staff feedback, so.
Thanks. Clarissa?
Do you need to talk to the mic?
Right.
Do you have a mic out there?
They don't. It's not, it doesn't really.
You, you might have to come up and talk.
I'll be so glad when we're into a different situation.
Yes.
I know. It's hard to hear you guys from there.
Well, then we're recording.
I know, yeah. Thanks, Clarissa.
It's a few steps. Um, I, I agree with the idea of completing the first phase of this, phases meaning the equity policy and, um, or the equity results policy, this before doing this. Um, but in the spirit of what Rob is saying, the way these were crafted, they did come from what the Equity Advisory Committee put together. And so the theme, the spirit, the feeling, or however you want to phrase that, is captured here. And I think the theme and spirit of everything that our, our committee has is captured in the changes. What we're getting hung up on, which is fine, it's great conversation, are how different people are defining different words and what those words do for them. And so for this one, since it's what the superintendent will, if we can get the other pieces in line, then I think he has a better starting point with talking about what he will, will do. And so that's just, I'm, I'm trying to put it kind of all longitudinally. Because I think after looking at kind of how this has played out tonight and how important the work is, um, we could be in the same position later with this if we don't wait and finish what we'd started before.
And that's why I want to make sure that the input we're getting is coming early in the game versus in the middle of the game, because I value the, I know we all value the work of our, our citizen committees and the work you guys are doing. Um, and so we got to make sure that as we move this forward, that work is, can I say respect? They know that that work is respect. Now I'm all worried about certain words.
Well, like I said, it's good conversation.
Yeah.
So is it then that, do you want that, do you want feedback on this also?
We're, we're workshopping the OE side of things. I, I did want to ask, now that you're here.
Yeah.
Maintaining a climate and culture respectful of each person, does that carry a different, um, uh, connotation than, uh, the be respectful and compassionate, uh, did in the results policy?
No. It, it still has to, it would still be something that we'd, that we'd change if, if asked. So Julie, that's a good point Julie brought up, that it has respect here and not in the other.
Do you think of the, uh, we'll see, we, we said discuss and engage in controversies, uh, and what's on the screen is not what's going to be the final language, but empathy, civility, respect and dignity, those words there.
Yep.
Compared to the number five on the right, where it says robust conversations around controversies. Um, and I'll tell you my thinking about writing the words robust contra-, conversations were the reports that I was getting from my son's civics classes last year, where he had a teacher who would permit a conversation to continue and he was moderating this conversation, it's a US history class.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but my son came home frustrated because the teacher just wouldn't take a side, wouldn't take a side.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but he created a forum for a robust conversation in the classroom, which is, uh, consistent with the policies we have now about.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what I was thinking of when writing the word robust conversations.
Mm-hmm.
And I think what we need are just responses and suggestions to the kind of effect that the language has.
Yeah, the idea behind the use of uncomfortable there, um, had to do with our, um, committees training and professional development with the courageous conversation protocol and having, experiencing discomfort. And the, it is true. It is not your natural, you know, instinct to have empathy and compassion for one whom is causing you discomfort. Um, and the more you practice that, the less, uh, uncomfortable that becomes. And so the reason why that was put there is because, um, we are trying to m- model what adults are doing, right, and want, wanting the kids to do something, um, similar. So that's where that came up. That's why it came out, um, and was placed in that space.
Are there items missing from an operational expectation that
Right.
have been found in the work that you're doing, uh, an expectation that you would like to see, I guess, um, maintained about, um, the, well, the operations of the school, uh, in the district? Is there something missing from this list? It's kind of like asking what you want from the store the minute before you leave, but my mind goes blank on things like that in those moments, but that's pretty much it.
Uh, no, like I was saying, I don't, I, no, there's not necessarily something missing. We, we could make this an eighteen-page document for trying to include all of the things, but I think the general, like I said, the general essence or theme are presented here. We just have to agree on the language.
Okay.
Okay. That's good. When does your, when do your committees, committee meet again?
Monthly. Um, so we met on the twenty-ninth and so we'll meet again the last week here of this month. However, uh, they're used to receiving what we call homework from me. And so, and they always love giving their input, um, and, and really appreciate being asked. And so if there's anything you'd like input on, I'm happy to share with them and provide a space where you can see, you know, put it in a doc of some sort that, that you can see the commentary. That's an option.
What time do they meet? Where do, when, where and how?
We, we, we meet virtually and it is a two-hour meeting normally, so five to seven or five thirty to seven thirty.
Okay.
So the Wednesdays, the, the last week?
It was Wednesday this time because we had strategic planning meeting on Thursday. So they actually prefer Thursday meetings.
If they meet on the twenty-eighth, that'd be two days after. We're trying to finish this.
Well, I like the idea of giving it to them and having them maybe make some comments and that way we could review. And we're not looking for a whole revision here. We're just want to make sure there's enough, there's nothing in here that could be a, you know, a misstep that.
We want to make sure people feel the things we want them to, you know, that the culture reflects what we want. Mm-hmm. And, and they'll notice their language in the policy, uh, excuse me, in the, uh, OE here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they have the equity results policy fresh on their minds. And so I don't think it would be a, a stretch to ask for just generally, like the, our respect is going to come up because it came up before. So having the document in front of them, that'll definitely be something that they talk about. But just in general, do we, do we see an alignment between all of the documents that we've looked at so far? And is there any wording, um, or phrasing that is from their perspective of the stakeholder group, um, that causes a rub and then they can talk about what their rub looks like and you all can see it, um, and it'll be there for you to access.
Um, how do you guys feel about that?
I like the idea.
Cause I want to hear from them sooner rather than later on stuff. I just think it's more productive and it helps guide us as we're moving forward with our, with all of this. Just feels like people want to be heard early and, and have us be able to structure things around. Doesn't always mean we'll agree, but I mean, usually we do, but, you know, because if they make a compelling point, we want to hear it and we want to act on it. So I think is it helpful or not to have a board, have a board member or two in that conversation as they talk about things or?
They enjoy having Rob, uh, to be able to give context. One of the comments that was actually made was it was really helpful to hear the thought process behind or the context behind each of these statements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they're having some of the same thoughts that are happening here. It's like, well, what did you mean by this? Explain, explain that to us. Same thing. Our comments, so what did you, what did you mean by that? So we had Jamila here who was the spokesperson for that to explain.
Right.
Um, the, the, what I can say though is that what we've done in the past with the committee is when we have documents, for example, when we were crafting the, the policy that we presented to you all, we did some in-person work with that, but they also did that, you know, in their own space to have time to process and chew on. And then we met in the next meeting to finalize. So there was never a whole bunch of live wordsmithing. People's, um, if they were just initially like absolutely not, that was an easy thing to kind of talk about. But people needed time to chew on it and process it. Um, and then we could ask questions to each other. Well, what did you mean by?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, uh, if this is going to be like an iterative or if we do it in phases, since it's still in workshop, I'm happy to have them look at it minus the context. Some of the contextual questions may come up. And then that'll make for a more efficient time when we, if we are going to have a board member attend again to hone in on where the questions came up rather than opening it up alive.
Yeah. Okay. Cause I'm kind of almost thinking that we might want to have, if we have people that are available, have two people, two, but we, if we do three, then we're a meeting and it has to be a public meeting. So, um, but to have a couple of us, um, there to give, answer any questions or give them any context that they need to have, um, and then that way it can just roll right on out to our first reading, um, with that input and stuff. So, yeah, if, if it would with that input and stuff, so yeah, if if it would be possible to get the dates of the meetings um so that we can chat with everybody to see who would like to maybe be involved in that way, cause I think it's really good for people, for for us to hear firsthand from the group and then also to be available to clarify anything that might need clarification. So everybody, and I'll talk to Rachel when she gets back about who might be interested in being involved in that process and we'll get everybody, get them connected with you so that you know who's gonna be there from the board.
Sounds good.
Was there also, you you, in describing your process, I thought I heard like folks were commenting on text that might have been sitting like in Google Docs, they were adding comments off to the side.
Correct.
Does that sound like something?
Hey, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Cause then we can kinda see it and see are they sometimes you always wonder, are they gonna go off in a direction that we hadn't thought of and it could be good, bad or indifferent, but um it gives us kind of a heads up of what their thinking is, so as we get ready to connect with with everybody that we kinda have a little bit of a clue as to what might be coming our way.
We've all got district emails and and notebooks here. Is it, we could put that text into a a Google Doc that you can curate for?
If I'm gonna read it, I gotta have somebody help me, cause I can never open my Google Docs on the district side. So once again, your clueless board president, when it comes to technology, I need help.
If it's a, if it's a uh live document like that though and we're all working, I, I bet, would that can be considered a meeting?
If we, if we uh if we receive view only access and cannot comment ourselves.
Then it would be fine.
It would be fine.
Yeah, and that's what we need to do, yeah.
And that could be extended to.
So we can't respond back, that's, yes.
So then I need to then create the doc, if you create it, you have editing rights, you can't create a doc and only give yourself viewing rights, so I would have to create it or copy and paste this into a doc.
And that's how it should be anyway, cause it's a work of the, your committee. We're just coming in. Sorry, I put something in my mouth, we're just, we're just coming in with, to be there as also a resource to you. And so we can move this along, so and then just for us to be informed, so yeah, you should be in control of it, Clarissa, cause it is your, your team's work. We just wanna be privy to some of the comments or suggestions as we're doing our work over here. And I think the flow will be nice.
I agree.
But we definitely can't have it being a board doc kinda, or a board um process, cause then it gets us all into trouble. And really, that's not our role in that, we're here, we're here to receive input. Not to guide.
But we're asking them to look at our
Yeah.
and revise it or to
To
right?
Feedback about it.
Yeah.
I would recommend not eh eh, not doing any wordsmithing, just like, let's not change will to should, that kinda stuff. But if the comments were to pile up on the side of each, each of these places, uh each of these items um with suggestions about that. Uh then the document won't end up looking like the one on the right where there's crossouts and underlines and colors and.
No, it would, it would be highlighted, so what happens is is the whole doc, so for example, if I had a comment for the first one, I would highlight, you know, provide student with access and then say add comment, and so that those three words would be highlighted and then the comment would be over to the side. And so, no, it wouldn't be sh- strike through and red and things like that, but it would, it would appear. Your whole document would probably just be yellow, so you'd have to click, you'd have to click to see all the comments, but that, yeah.
That's okay.
That's okay, cause when you click on each of the little words, then the right comments get highlighted on the side. So, one thing you could do is if if you make the view only privileges public, like to everybody on earth, then it uh doesn't really matter which Google account we use to access it, we won't need permission to see, we would just need permission to edit.
Right. The only person that would have permission to edit would be the person who created the doc.
Right, right. So, as as a technical note goes, now, in connection here with the alignment with the R three, I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around that, is that we've got places here, it says like discuss and engage in controversies and uncomfortable issues and over here permit robust conversations. Mike, are you saying that those should have the same place in the numerical order of things?
I'm just saying that if there's words that we're avoiding in one, I would think you'd want to think about avoiding them in the other, or you'd want some consistency, that's I don't, I'm not necessarily talking about the numbers.
I was trying to gauge the depth of alignment.
My mind's shallow.
Are they supposed to align like that, like should one be one? Oh, okay.
I mean, they don't have to, but it might make it easy for people to be able to go, if they were to compare, eh, look at all the documents in a in a row. To be able to see that this line about what students will do matches to what this one, the first line does for what the superintendents could inter- do to ensure that they, they're doing that, to me, it just makes sense that they kinda have a certain, the same numbering alignment that way.
Yeah, I'm
Which is easy enough to just re- shuffle them around, but.
Grappling with whether or not there's a one to one match and.
No, well, there's six there and seven there, so no.
Yeah, they don't know, and I don't know that it does, it it doesn't work that way with some of the other results policies.
That's true too. So let's not do that, cause then we'll have to look at all of them.
Cause some of them have like twelve things on under them, or a number of things under them, and they don't have that many.
Two or three under the results.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, yeah, cause sometimes the student want, yeah, the students will isn't quite as
It's not as hefty, it's more like you say.
No, which is fine, but maybe kind of try and have some alignment, we don't have to go back and do it and maybe when we review and we could do it then, but just to be organized about it, I think is my.
Yeah. That can happen.
That way, if you're comparing what this says to what you're gonna do, it'd be easier for you just for referencing it, to be able to see it in a certain organized manner. Just a thought on that. So do you feel comfortable with that process as far as getting us that information? I don't wanna mess up other plans that you have with this committee, you know, I know you probably have other projects and stuff that you're working on, so.
Yes, we do, what we're, we also realize that that's one of the functions of the committee is to provide feedback on district level things, which this is. Um and so, so my next steps are so that I'm clear, is to take this, create a Google Doc out of it and provide comment only uh privileges to the committee, for them to be able to add those and view privileges to you.
They just, the world.
It can be to the whole group, since we're not gonna be communicating, we can see, so we can see them.
Yes. Okay, so the link I provided for you is just the, anyone can view.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
But then we'll get a cou- we'll see if we can't get a couple of board members so that if you need them at a meeting or whatever to answer questions, anything like that to be support to the committee. We'll have, have that available for you.
Okay, that sounds great.
Would it help your members to have um short paragraphs, short descriptive paragraphs that start with the words an operational expectation policy is and is for short descriptions of the context of that policy?
I want to answer your question correctly, so can you, can you rephrase that?
Do your, do your folks need more context than just the words operational expectation and?
Ah, the the Y behind, um like you did with the other areas so that they understood how, yeah, that'd be fine, yeah, that'd be great.
Cause I could supply short three sentence descriptions, like a results policy is for this, an operational expectation is for that.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's in Randy and Linda's book somewhere, we just copied out of that.
Yeah. Cause that way they'll understand why we have this, cause it's our governance model. And that way it'll kinda give them some perspective as to what the process looks like.
Yeah, so Rob spent the first few moments of his time with us walking through just that, we just didn't get to the we didn't go in depth about the OE, so we did talk about the difference between a district policy, the board policy, what a results policy is, he did walk us through that, which is very helpful.
We can give them a little glossary of stuff just so they have it. Cause sometimes we even kinda have to reiterate about, okay, wait, we gotta do it like, we gotta do this. Okay, that'd be good.
We take that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Any other comments? So we will, as we're getting your work, start formulating for our we'll start formulating what this should all look like. Um and then in our first reading we should probably have, each of us have seen things ahead of time as far as the comments and then our writing of the document. And so we might wanna put you and Rachel on that again.
Love it.
Unless Julie wants to be writing, Paul, working on writing on this one.
I'm fine with Rob and Rachel, cause they're the ones that kinda started it together.
Did a good job on the last step. So maybe that way we can then move into that first reading and we've had the input and it's okay to still give us more input during, cause sometimes stuff comes up, you know, we still wanna be open to anybody wanting to talk to us during our first and second readings. Um so, but the earlier, the better is always.
Oh, for sure, I I can, I have access to this already, the OE.
I think it's in the public piece of the board docs.
It's in board doc.
Okay, so then yes. Okay, um clarifying question, so what you saw tonight that that the committee responded on on the twenty ninth, was that, was tonight the first time you've seen it?
It was the first opportunity to really bring it before the full board.
Okay. That that, then then, then I understand.
If um just thinking about process as we roll more of this kinda stuff out and we're much more engaged with your team and and everything is the more that we front load things so that if we need to have kind of extend, like if we have to have more than one workshop, say, or whatever, if we're seeing I'm not necessarily thinking that's gonna happen here, but we have had situations where it's almost like we open a can of worms and the can gets bigger and bigger and the worms keep crawling out and we have to keep postponing which is fine, but if the can of worms suddenly gets open on second reading, that's the problem, because it becomes but mu- mu- as you saw tonight, a much more challenging thing to do. And so it doesn't happen very often like that, so it kinda, I think, threw us a little bit, because it just I mean, usually things flow pretty easily, but this is so important, we have to have every word right. So I think that's kinda what what we're dealing with here. And I'm sorry if you guys got caught off guard too, cause I'm sure that our sudden like, what, what, wait?
No, 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 we, we try our best to prepare for the unexpected, that's that's kinda what we have to do anyway on a daily basis. Uh we just wanna make sure that our input is effective and and useful real time. Um and so, so to speak to this about uh the timeliness of providing it for you, we don't when we provide our input, we don't know the, I mean, we provide it, we don't know when it is shared, the respect piece we get, cause we just meant about that. But we don't, we don't know when everything is, we assume once we share it, it goes, right? So the timeframe between um is unknown to us, and so uh for this, so that we don't have that uh happen again, we will get it, I mean, I can ask them to um start commenting as soon as they get it, but what is a a reasonable amount of time to have it to you so that you have time to process it and chew on it, just as we did as a committee um with the previous documents?
I think that if we, cause we wanna have this on our next board meeting as a first reading.
Oh, okay.
But if we, if that's a pro- if that process is gonna be difficult, because you guys don't even meet till after our next board meeting.
Correct.
So you guys might need time to have more conversation. I guess it might depend on how many comments are coming through and and you'd have to make, be a judge of, we've got a lot to discuss here, we've got a lot. If it looks like it's a little bit of wordsmithing or whatever, that kind of is in alignment with what we've been talking about up here. We may not need as much time. I know I'm not giving you an exact answer because the circumstances, I would rather have you say we need more time as a committee, because I'm seeing a lot of input that from, just from our Google Docs that is gonna warrant us having quite the discussion, and then we would have, make sure we have a couple board members there. And then I'd rather postpone it to the board meeting after that, especially because we're still working on this stuff. And I know that'll be helpful as we kinda clar- have some clarity there.
And and how soon would you need that update? Uh what I'm trying to make sure is that what we give you all as a committee gives you the time to to look at it, so if I if you need an update, like I'm like, I'm looking at it and I see a large amount of comments.
So if we plan.
Is it, do you need a week, I, so I gave, I gave the committee a week. I gave the documents from before to the committee, they had a week to look at it, process it, then we met and that's when we talked about it, like.
That's a good turnaround time, really, I think, and as long as we know it's coming our way and we, we get that information, what are you thinking, Julie?
Well, I'm thinking that as long as we have it because our meetings are on Tuesdays, I think if we had it like by the Wednesday or Thursday before.
So a week for you all too.
A couple of days that we could call and ask questions if needed.
And if you make a recommendation to us, you know, you can do that through me and Jenny, is, I don't think the committee, we're ready or prepared because of the, you know, the the input we're getting is coming in fast and furious and maybe it's more complicated than what we all anticipate. Just let us know and we can adjust. Just so we don't wanna adjust at the, you know, at the board meeting or or right before the, a board meeting. But, I mean, hopefully we, we won't have that, I want you to know though that you have that option, that if you feel like you guys need more time, just let us know and we'll adjust. Does that feel okay to you?
Mm-hmm, it does, yes.
Were we clarifying?
No, no, I just, I I I appreciate the flexibility on our part, I just wanna make sure when we get to the point where we are ready, you need at least a week to look at what we are ready for you to, that's what I'm how much time do we need?
Yes, we do, we do.
So if we're going to use that word on the twenty sixth, the twenty, uh Julie's saying the twentieth or twenty first would be
When you'd need to see it.
The dates for.
So that helps me backwards plan with my committee, knowing, so if eh, if we are approaching the twentieth, I'm looking three to four days before that at the document and going, and then that's when I'd reach out, okay?
Yeah.
Um, question for Bill. Wake up. You having a nap over there? No, I wanted, I do want you to feel like, as you're looking at this stuff, if there's anything in there that you think teachers and staff couldn't do. I wanna know, I I wanna know what it is and why. I'm not saying that we're willing to change it, but I think it's really important, well, I'm just saying. I know, I said, it's an opinion and, but we're open to hearing about some of this stuff. Because they're gonna be accountable, I mean, when Mike's accountable, everybody downstream is accountable right along with them. And so I just wanna make sure that we don't get in a situation after we've passed this and then all of a sudden, we've gotta, wait a minute here, this is not gonna fly, or this is gonna require something in our contract or blah, 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 I mean, I don't know if that would come up, but I'm just saying. Everybody needs to speak now or forever hold their peace.
Well, I mean, we have, we have, we have agreed with the process, we have a CBA. And it's like if we want to change that, then we would, you know, I'd see it agree to. I don't, I, this is, to me, this is very suggestive of the controversial politics policy. We, we kind of have to do this situation at a time. It, it's not really present to CBA that well. Although teaching autonomy is. And so as, as, as long as the educators are the ones who are making the choices, I think that we can probably, we can probably work through any of our different differences. If something gets mandated out, yeah, I mean, yeah, we're going to want some input on that. And at this point, you know, you, 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 you choose the what we teach, we use the methods and then we bargain the impacts. That, that's the way, that's the process.
But definitely look, I mean, if there's something up there that you think, I mean, I'm finding it hard to believe that there would be anything in there that a teacher wouldn't want to do. I mean, if they care about kids.
Doesn't matter until it matters.
Exactly.
All of a sudden, every word becomes important, you know. But, but I think at this point, as far as the policy is concerned, you guys do the policy, we bargain the impacts.
Okay.
It's going to take twice as many teachers to do this, they'll be in a problem. But I don't see that.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Just gotta be reasonable, she says, it's always a reasonable person's standard.
Yeah, that does come from the, that comes from the Aspen boilerplate.
I'm trying to, I, I want to meet a reasonable person these days.
We don't see many.
It was explained to me as a legal term.
Yeah.
Is actually an interpretive standard that if a reasonable person could, then.
Okay.
But it's up for interpretation.
It's also, that's why there's an interpretation document.
So any thoughts, Julie?
No, I like the comments or going back and making it more. Sorry, I agree with where we're going.
Okay.
I don't want to rehash all the points.
Lori.
First reading November ninth, preceded by correction.
And input, yeah, so that if we can have opportunity to tweak the policy if we need to, yeah.
So we'd be workshopping this again. We'd be workshopping this again next time?
What's our board, when is our?
Twenty six, I think, twenty something?
Twenty six, but I don't think the committee gets together before then.
We might see comments on whatever Google Docs you set up.
Yeah.
Before then, but, uh, there's plenty of time between now and the ninth to, yeah.
Yeah, we could measure progress as we move along and see what we're getting from the committee and stuff.
I think it ought to, as we get closer to first reading, it ought to, it ought to get a legal review. It's an operational expectation and we are trying, I, I was trying to connect to operational requirements found in law. So Paul would have a look at it. I think that'd be money well spent.
Yeah.
But I'm taking away, supply Clarissa with descriptive paragraphs of policy and purpose of policy. And wait for input. Okay.
That sounds good. Do we have anything else to add on this discussion? Mike?
No.
Lori? Julie?
No.
Anyone in the audience? Okay. Let's do a levy update. Mr. Maralino.
Let me share a few documents with you all. So what, what you have in front of you is uh, kind of a, it's a document. Uh, are you going to wait for Jenny to come back?
No, no.
Go ahead.
Keep going.
It's a document that looks at, uh, the levy rates, uh, for the bond levy, the tax levy, the M and O levy, total tax rate and then M and O levy amounts. Twenty one and twenty two are already authorized by the voters in two thousand nineteen. The twenty three, twenty four, twenty five numbers are numbers related to, um, looking at a total tax rate that remains relatively flat over the term. And then you've also got a levy equalization amount and then a total levy and levy equalization amount. And it was, it was meant to be a way of looking at, uh, it's, it's, we're not called, it's not called M and O levy, but it's the M and O levy. Um, if we were to run one for three years and as the bond rate drops roughly twenty cents a year, if we were to increase the operational levy, and then you can see the overall total tax rate, starting at three ninety and ending at four oh two. And you can see the amount of money that that ends up generating. And I've talked at the last couple of meetings that we've had about this, this time, moment in time where enrollment's declining, our levy equalization is going away, our S R funds will be dwindling. They're effectively done by no, no later than twenty three, twenty four. Um, running out where there's a need for the levy to increase and whether or not we use the bond rate decreasing to offset the increase in the tax rate. And so that, this is a scenario. Now, what I would say to you is we always look at, you know, we've always looked at a house and what are the taxes on a house. And you're going to see inflationary pressure on a house, um, each year. The, the values go up. Our values have gone up more in the last few years. This would assume about an eight percent, a six percent and a five percent over a three-year period. So there's an increase in what a home, even if the rate stays the same, there's an increase because your house has been reassessed at a higher amount. So there is a gain over inflation over time. And then there's a little bit of an increase because you've increased by roughly twelve cents. I think thirteen, uh, twelve cents from three ninety to, to four oh two over that time period. So there isn't any question that the pressure overall on the system with an enrollment decline and then, again, we've talked previously, with the new way that we collect levy dollars, enrollment decline means over time, we're going to have less ability to collect. So we kind of, for the purposes of trying to maintain as much continuity as we can, it's likely in our, uh, best interest in terms of operational, being able to deliver the program that we've delivered for that number to increase over time. So that's, that's really, uh, it, it's kind of taking this bond rate decrease in and applying it on the operational side, which definitely, whenever we run a bond in the future, uh, means we're running a bond to increase, you know, with a tax increase to make that happen. Uh, but I think that the potential impact on the, on the general fund is pretty significant because of the enrollment decline, because of the levy equalization dollars. Basically, we, we have to have about a ten million dollar increase in the levy just to offset the fact that we're losing levy equalization funds. But you can see over a, over a, uh, one, two, three, four-year period, that levy, levy equalization number going from about forty five million to about sixty five million. Now, that, it would, there would be an increase anyway, because we would have a levy, or we would have an inflationary increase anyway, but this does allow us to kind of have a little bit additional capacity. And I would, I, I've said this earlier, you, we, we've lost in about two thousand kids from two thousand nineteen, twenty to two thousand twenty one, twenty two. We've been able to use S R funds, uh, in order to maintain the program this year and likely, uh, well, this year for sure. But that, you, you can't, you can't have two thousand less kids and not have that impact, uh, the operational program, the instructional program, um, at some point. So, you know, even with the levy in, uh, being approved, we, we still would have to go through some reductions just because of the reductions in enrollment. So, uh, you know, for me, um, e- even with the flat, I guess, first thing is even with the flat overall tax rate, people still will pay more in taxes because of the value impact on their home. And it's not the straight eight percent or six percent or five percent, because our value in the, in the district increases also because of new growth. I mean, we still see all kinds of new growth going on, uh, whether that's industrial, whether it's commercial or whether it's residential. Um, but there would, there would be an impact and I think it, we have to be honest about that, that, that there would be a little bit of an increase beyond what inflation w- w- would be. I think Gail and I looked at this, the board meeting in December is after the, um, so either we need to set up a special board meeting or we would need to by the November ninth meeting, settle on a resolution. And the resolution would be a dollar amount and a rate that we would be, uh, letting people know. Now, Gail, myself and Jennifer Jacobson are meeting Thursday and then we will be scheduling our first meeting and I'm sure we'll reach out to Lauren and Bill and others, uh, to kind of talk about the, the, um, and, and putting together the informational, um, aspect of this. But we're, we're getting to the point in time where we kind of need to make a call on how we're, what we're thinking about. So I, I guess I'm, I'm up for any kind of questions you might have or comments.
No, I like this idea. I like the idea of, um, having it appear to be the same tax rate as people are paying overall. I think that's going to be a much better option for us to go out to the community and ask for us to get this passed.
Be nice if the property tax weren't as difficult to explain as it is.
Yeah.
Uh,
Yeah.
Drawing as it does from the full value of the land under, in the boundaries of the district, divided by, divided by, multiplied by, uh, but.
None of our funding is easy.
None, none of the funding is easy, but the maintenance of tax rate is a very, very typical story. We're able to accomplish what we do without raising rates is. We just have to be clear about how the money is going to be used. Is it still called an enrichment levy?
It's, yeah, it's not M and O. It's like E P O or something, enrichment and something else. And then, and, and then we have to have a plan approved by O S P I in addition to, uh, the board resolution for the county. So we, we would do that work as well.
The, the single question that I hear from folks skeptical about school taxes is, what are you going to do with the money? Uh, they, they're almost looking for like program codes, specific, this is going to A S B or the football team or whatever the thought is.
Which we now have to actually, I mean, we do code how we spend the money.
Right.
Um, by levy versus state, local funds versus state funds. So there is that ability and we have talked about making ourselves available i- i- as many opportunities for questions and answers with Zooms, within person, however we need to do it. Because we have to, I mean, I think now more than any time, people just have a lot of questions about, what are we doing? How are we doing it? My kid's not been in school for all this time. Why do you need the money? What are the programs we have? Uh, but I think, I think we need to talk about some of the things we shared with folks at Henrietta Lacks last weekend and the things that we, we're doing to support the students in the district, which we've got all kinds of great examples of the programs.
It'd be important.
So is the next meeting then, when we're going to decide and?
So we can talk, I mean, uh, we wouldn't pass, I think we passed the resolution November ninth. If you all feel comfortable with the direction, I think we would kind of start drafting what that would look like, drafting some of the informational that we would provide. Um, and I can share that with all of you ahead of time, well ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yes, it's only the twelfth today. We've got a whole month. So I would think we would do that by next week, start getting you that information. So that you have, and any questions you have or things that you're seeing that seem different, um, and then we'll start having informational, well, we'll start Thursday, but then we'll expand off of that and, and.
Do you have any plans on reaching out to some of our community members that have helped us in the past with, uh, not just the Evergreen Citizens for School stuff, but just in the structure of this, that are the more, the financiers of, of the area that can say yay or nay, this is going to go, this isn't going to go, or what they're hearing people talking about?
Um, I think that we can do that. Uh, you know, I think, I'm, I'm thinking about the people that we've reached out to. So the David Nierberg, Tim Shower, um, even, uh, uh, I can't remember, the Angelo, um.
Oh, Albert.
Yeah, Albert. But yeah, we, we, we will do that and then.
Just because they were so good, they were good to work with before when we talked about the bond and everything.
Another one was, uh, uh, Tracy. What's his last name? What is their last name? Uh, Duwills.
Wilsons.
Oh.
The Wilsons, yeah.
Linda and Tracy, yeah.
I was going to say, there's a lot of Tracy's here.
Tracy Wilson.
Tr- yeah, so I mean, they, they were all very helpful with us. And then, and then we will also have a citizens group that we'll talk with and.
Yep, that's the key, is we got to get people, Marty, we'll put Marty in charge.
Yeah, Marty wants to be there. We, we talked already about that. But we'll tap into the equity committee. We'll talk, in, in, any committees that we could possibly.
All the committees.
Yeah, and we need to work with every committee. I mean, I kind of see it from November ninth, it's like from November ninth until February, it's as many groups as we can get in front of. And then I'm, I'm on the board of the Chamber of Commerce now, so we would, I could work with the Chamber of Commerce and get in front of as many of those people also and talk with.
Rotary.
Yeah, definitely get, um, the Home Builders Association and the Realtors Associations.
B I A, SWACA.
Yeah.
Yes, all of the above. Okay. So I'll do that and I'll get you guys, I'll get all of you information, um, either later this week or early next week on kind of some of the themes.
That sounds good.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, well, that's all we have.
I think we have legislative too.
Oh, that's right.
Well, we passed it.
We got General Assembly coming up.
I said something about it. Oh, there.
Melissa Gomboski is scheduled at some point in the.
So Melissa was going to come to the meeting the twenty sixth and talk and, and I'm assuming you still want to do that, because I don't think we want to push it out too far.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So we'll have her scheduled, um, she'll probably come down and do it in person. She's already scheduled.
Yeah.
There's a, well, if you go on the WADA website and look at that big handbook for the General Assembly, if there's something that you think Evergreen ought to oppose, then next meeting is the time to do that. Otherwise, I feel like we could safely take the recommendations of the Legislative Committee and vote for or against based on that.
Has Melissa seen it?
I don't know, but her input would.
Seen it, but we've not ta- talked about it.
I think that would be great to get her input just a couple of days before the assembly.
Cause we have, we prioritize it after that, but it's a span of time instead of doing it that evening on a sheet of paper. So we, there's some time to think that through and.
I think too, if she or Mike had seen any red flags to alert us to that and see, because sometimes you'll know the behind the scenes ramifications on some of this stuff more than we will.
Yeah, I feel, I mean, she's always really dialed in on all of that.
That's what I figured.
The biggest piece of work, uh, that I've been doing is just to consolidate the safety position so that we can prioritize one association's safety position very high instead of having two that are very similar. And that, it should be easy for us to support it, whether it's one or two, but that's, that's about the only loose thought that I got left in the moment.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, everybody.